Republican Candidate Forum. We're happy you were able to be with us this evening. You never know when you plan this, whether it's going to be a thousand people, or a hundred, or ten. But that's okay. We're going to do it for several reasons, because we want an opportunity to showcase our Republican candidates. We also are videotaping this event so that it will be available for them to use on their websites and so forth. So, again, we appreciate you being a part of it. If you would please stand with me, and I'd ask Jackson Stansel to provide our indication.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this wonderful county that we live in, and state and country. Lord, we just pray for all of our leaders, and we pray for the people on stage tonight, that they may read and study your word, and if they are elected, to be a reflection of you. Lord, we just thank you for sending your son, Jesus Christ, to die on the cross for all of us. In his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Jackson. Please remain standing and join with me with our pledge allegiance to the flag, which you'll see upon the stage here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have asked our good friends, John and Pam Dismukes, to come in from the Wilmington area. They are radio talk show hosts. They are very active in the Republican Party. They have done forums and all kinds of different things, and I'll let them tell more about themselves, but we've asked them to come in and be our moderators. We wanted to provide a good and fair stage for all of our candidates to be able to display their abilities and talk about their ideas for the school board. And so Pam and John, I think, will do a great job. And at this time, I'll turn it over to them, and they're going to go through the process of the order of the candidates, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Republican School Board Forum. I am John Dismukes, and this is my wife Pam. We have a radio show down in Wilmington, North Carolina, 11:00 AM WLTT, and we were asked to moderate this forum, I guess, right Pam? As non-part from, have no dog in the fight, so to speak. And so this is your forum. I hope we've had a good period for questions to be submitted, and we have some questions. If you see me going back on my phone, that's from my emails that I've gotten with questions. And we have a lot of them written down. Yes, so we have plenty of questions, and we hope to get through this. And we've got a lot of good candidates. So let's select the candidates. We have shown them up, good Pam. Let's do it in front of everybody here. All right, that's the first one. First one will be Mr. Todd Sutton. Todd, you are number one. All right. Second candidate is Mr. Ronald Johnson. All right. Third candidate, Dr. Peggy Smith. And, yes, Ms. Teresa Grant. And we will start a introduction period of three minutes where you have an introductory speech, and then we will get to the questions, and you have two minutes each to answer the questions. All right.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight to show your support to the Republican Party Candidate Forum. My name is Todd Sutton. I am a Johnston County native of 20 years, a husband, father of two. My family and I have long vested interest in Johnston County's school system. Our family has students and teachers in all areas of Johnston County public schools. Also, as a parent of a high-functioning special needs student, I have experienced a stance on bullying and have been very pleased with the support from the staff and administration. Our current board has been very proactive in educational policies, and I am asking you to help me continue the strong legacy that has been built and keep the strong positive relationship between the school board, superintendent, cabinet, and teachers. I hope I can count on your vote so that I can be an advocate for all the children and a voice for the parents of Johnston County. Thank you.
All right. Next candidate is Mr. Ronald Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ronald Johnson. I'm running for the school board. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Appreciate the Republican Party for putting on this forum. Think it's going to be a great event, and again, I appreciate all my supporters for coming out tonight. My full-time job is on with police detective with the town of Smithfield. I've been a police officer for 11 years. During that time, I was a school resource officer for five years in the Smithfield-area schools. I helped a lot of children get away from gangs, drugs, and violence, helped them get jobs, join the military, and graduate high school. I have a record. I have a measurable record. I've done a lot for teens. I've helped start a driving program all over this state that focuses on giving kids the hands-on experience they need to succeed and live through the age of 25. Tonight, you're going to hear from four good candidates, but I ask you to remember me in November. We have a lot of work that needs to be done in Johnston County, and I want to be a part of a team that gets a lot accomplished for our young people. Some of my ideas include implementing a bio-work program, which is a four-month certification program, so our children not attending college that need to go to work immediately after high school can get a job at one of our largest employers, Griffles, and another known as which experienced a $2 billion expansion a couple of months ago. Another thing I strongly want to implement is a public safety academy, because I've seen what firefighters, police, and EMS can do for children, and I've seen them get kids out of bad situations and give them a way to give back to their community. I look forward to giving you some of my ideas tonight, and thank you for being here.
All right. Next candidate is Dr. Peggy Smith.
And please just call me Peggy D. Smith. That's just fine. Welcome, and thank you so much for coming. I want to thank the Republican Party for doing this. It is an honor to be here having this time with you. I'd like to start by telling you a little bit about my background. As a child, poor, farm, reared, and I can truly say that no one ever made me feel poor. Teachers believed in me. My parents always told me education is your ticket out of poverty. Believe it or not, my husband of 50 years and I are still living in the house in which I was reared, because Johnston County is precious to me and the school system I am passionate about. Teachers made a difference for me, and I have spent my career trying to make a difference for children. I have 30 years as a classroom teacher, as a celebrated principal of the year for North Carolina, and other honors that say I was pretty good at what I did. But it wasn't me. It was those teachers, Linda Sutton, sitting right there, who was a staff member with me for seven or eight years. Those people made me look good because we had a common purpose, and that was to give children a future. It didn't matter whether they were poor. It didn't matter the color of their skin. It mattered that they needed a childhood first and then a future. So everything that I have ever been has been a result of loving people around me and my being recipient of faith that people had in me. I hope that you will vote for me in November. I will be soliciting my third term. We have a possibility of having five vacancies, and we need some experience on the board who can help new board members come on board running, because that's what it takes. I was amazed at how quickly you have to get up and running as a school board member. I have been honored to serve you and will be honored to continue to serve you should that be the will of the people. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
All right. Ms. Teresa Grant is our fourth candidate.
Hello. My name is Teresa Grant, and I appreciate each of you coming out tonight. I also want to thank the party for putting on the forum. As a past president of the Johnston County Republican Women, for the past eight years, I've moderated several of these forums myself, and I'll say I like having that microphone better than this microphone. I have been a resident of Johnston County for the last 20 years. I'm a chemist with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture, and as a chemist, I mentor and train young chemists every single day. I started out my career as a chemistry lab coordinator at Western State University and helped put myself through college by teaching chemistry lab, so I do have some teaching experience. I spent the last nine years in county politics. In doing that, I have worked with many of our school board members and county commissioners and our legislators, so I've already built those relationships, and those relationships will be key as a member of the board. I have two grandchildren in Johnston County schools. My oldest started out in Wake County. She was struggling with reading, and when they moved here, she advanced three reading levels in just eight to 10 weeks. So that just shows what a great school system we have here, and I want to do my part to help ensure that we continue to have a great school. Thank you again for coming out, and I appreciate your vote in November.
All right. Well, since we know where you're sitting at and know who you are now, we'll put your name tags out. That'd be all right? All right. And we will have the first question in just a second, since we started with Mr. Sutton. We will take the first question, and we'll start with Mr. Johnson. Johnston County school system serves over 30,000 students and has a budget of multimillion dollars. What qualifies you, and what is your unique qualification that qualifies you to serve as a Johnston County school board member?
Well, a couple of things that qualify me. Number one, my experience in the school system and seeing some things I would like to change. I have a ground experience with the schools. I was in the classrooms helping teachers. I was in the hallways looking at what students need. So I have the experience at the ground level. On top of that, I have a master's degree in business, which I earned in 2008, so I can appreciate what it needs to compile a budget and make the appropriate changes in order to get the most efficient results by benefiting our students dollar by dollar. Some of the things I would like to see changed would be some of the ways we do construction. I presented a build-to-suit model to the Johnston County Association of Realtors, which ultimately won me their financial support. And what would happen is that you would take our rapidly expanding areas and do a build-to-suit model, which means that that facility could be converted at the end of a 20-year lease or a 10-year lease, once we've maximized the benefit from the facility. With that being said, it could be converted into many different things to benefit the local economy, a concert venue, a movie theater, senior living, things that we need. So what we would do is we would build a site. Students would use that site. At the end of the lease, we would determine whether or not we want to keep it or not, and then that way, if we needed to build another school, we wouldn't incur the depreciation on the building and the upkeep. That's just one of my ideas. To answer your question again, I've got experience on the ground level, and I have a master's degree in business. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And I will go with you, Peggy Smith. Peggy D. Smith. Thank you. When I first got on the board, millions was a, an abstract word. Now that I've served on the board for eight years, it doesn't scare me as I thought it would, when today, Hight Construction came and said, "Well, you know you've got $100 million in capital repairs, not new construction repairs in our school system." Those are the needs of places like Triple S., South Johnston, Cooper Elementary, all of our older schools. We have tried to keep up with growth, so multimillion-dollar budgets don't scare me anymore. What scares me is trying to set priorities. How do we decide whether to build in this neighborhood or that neighborhood? The way we decide that is we listen to you. Our superintendent holds kitchen table discussions in all the areas of the school system, and from his discussions, we set budgets, we set curricular priorities, we adopt programs. Everything that money can buy has to be determined by the school board. If we need a bond issue, we have to solicit that from the county commissioners. We have no funding authority, only spending authority. Now, that can get pretty heady, because you want to do everything for everybody. And the worst part of our jobs is deciding where to spend the multimillion-dollar budget, 220 million or 205 million from the state, 60 million from the county, and then local funds that the schools raise on their own. Those priorities come from you, and I hope to continue to listen to your priorities. Thank you. All right. Teresa Grant.
As I said before, I have some teaching experience, so I do understand what the teachers are dealing through. As I said, I've worked with many of our elected officials already, and those relationships are key, because we have to work with the county commissioners on budgets. If there's other changes that we need, we may have to work with our state legislators, and those relationships are already built. I was a lab director at an environmental laboratory, and as a lab director, I did work with million-dollar budgets and profits and loss statements, and capital requests and expenditures, repairs and renovations to our facility. So that's, that's experience that I already have. We're getting ready to undergo our re-accreditation for advanced ed for the schools in October. As a, as a chemist, as manager, and accredited ISO 17025 accredited laboratory, I understand the accreditation process. I understand continuous improvement and those continuous improvement plans to help put things in place, and the self-assessments and things like that that are needed. So I think that all of this experience would help me be a good board member. Also, since the time that I decided to run back in November, I've had many parents and teachers reach out to me with issues, and I've been fortunate enough to be able to work with some of the board members and superintendent, first with Dr. Prun, and now with Dr. Rentr though, on trying to resolve some of those issues. And, and that's been a really neat thing to already be able to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Todd Sutton.
Well, outside of having a vested interest of a life as a school teacher of 20 years, I understand firsthand what they go through on a daily basis. As well as having two kids in the Johnston County public schools, I see firsthand what they deal with on a daily basis. But we all bring great ideas, but one person cannot do it on their own on the school board. It takes a team of collaboration and working together. And I would bring listening. We first got to listen, because another board member may have a great idea that we haven't thought about. It's not all about me. It's about us together as a team, because our main focus, and the reason we're all up here, is for the students and teachers and parents of Johnston County. So I think all of us have the same goal in mind, and that's to push Johnston County forward in the public school sector. So you have to listen. You have to ask questions to the parents, the students, be involved. I served on a PTA board in middle school as the president and vice president. I served on the vice president of the Panther Club at North Johnston High School. I'm currently the president of North Johnston High School's Panther Club. I have experience with budgets from their standpoint for the past four years. Also, I'm on the budget finance committee at my church. We have a $275,000 budget. It's not something that the school system has. However, it is a budget that we have to make sure and maintain our profit and loss. I serve as the treasurer of the Johnston County Ed Foundation, where we have over a million dollars in assets. And I was on the committee to form the first budget that the Johnston County Ed Foundation has ever had just this past summer. So I have experience of making sure that our checks and balances in place for our finances. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, goes next one. We start with Peggy Smith. What are your top three objectives if you are elected to the school board? Teachers, teachers, teachers. What scares me even more than managing multimillion-dollar budgets, setting priorities, is trying to fill classrooms with highly qualified teachers when we're competing against higher supplements in our neighboring county. And we've given four teacher supplements in the eight years. Even during a horrible recession, we did not lay off any classified staff when we were cut positions by the state. But on the other hand, there are not teachers going into the profession anymore because of many factors. My second priority is to continue to improve our facilities. Our facilities are our pride in Johnston County. We have no substandard facilities. That was not the case when I came here 20 some odd years ago, 30 years ago now, I guess. And facilities must be worthy of children. They deserve to come to school in a comfortable setting, and teachers deserve to have a building that they can be productive, in which they can be productive. My third priority is to make sure that the curriculum we offer in our schools is viable and internationally competitive. Our greatest need in this country is to be competitive internationally, and that is not the case as we speak. My faith in our curriculum department, as demonstrated by my wearing their CIA, that means Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, T-shirt tonight. I'm not usually this casual, but I really believe that a viable curriculum is our third most important need. Thank you. All right. Teresa Grant.
Narrowing it down to three is the hard part.
Exactly.
Certainly, keeping and equipping the great teachers that we have in the county. Like I said, my granddaughter's granddaughter advanced three reading levels. Was that because we had some really good teachers that were supporting her and educating her, and we need to make sure that we can keep them and help them to do their job. The other is vocational education. As I said, I'm a chemist, so certainly I am all about college and math and science. It's something that I have a passion for, but not every child deserves to go to college. And we need to help those children be life-ready and job-ready when they graduate from high school. So many more of those opportunities are, are needed. Lastly, something that I can't do as a board member sitting in the boardroom, this takes working with our state legislators and our lieutenant governor, and that's Common Core. I have parents come up to me and teachers come up to me everywhere I go and say they do not want Common Core. We can't make that happen in the boardroom. But I have sat down with our state legislators and talked to them about that. It was something that was supposed to be, that they thought would be on the agenda during the short session. That didn't happen. We're hoping that it will be there for the long session, but the Common Core standard itself is not the problem. I realize that, but that's just a matter of semantics to parents. I understand that it's the curriculum. They don't care whether it's the standard in the curriculum. They just want to be able to sit down and do math with their children. And as a person who's gone through calculus III, I can sit down with my grandchildren and have a difficult time trying to understand the math problem as well, or at least doing it the way they must.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Todd Sutton.
Three, three key points in my campaign, in no particular order. Growth management. We are one of the fastest-growing counties in the state, and that speaks volumes for our school system, that we have people from outside the county wanting to move to our county, and it drives our economic development. Just a couple of weeks ago, we were at Economic Development Luncheon, and they stated that as far as our school system goes. However, we need to make sure we have smart growth. I would like to collaborate with the planning board, the county commissioners, the developers, the real estate agents. We have one person from each of those committees, former committee, so that we can all get in the same room and understand where we're going with growth, so that we can make sure that we have schools for the students that are going to be with this growth. This is going to help maintain the success of our school system and to steer growth in the best possible way for our county with the main focus on our students, teachers, and parents. Secondly, we need to continue to be proactive with safety. I've met with principals who have monthly safety tests that they do in their schools, and then they get back in the room and ask questions. Work well. What should we change? So people say, "Well, it won't happen in Johnston County," but there's a lot of counties throughout the state, throughout our nation, that have said the same thing, and unfortunate things have happened. So we need to continue to be proactive to make sure that we keep everybody safe. 75% of my current household leaves and goes to a public school every day. So the last thing I want to see is them not come home in the afternoon. Third is teacher supplements with classified employees. We were all able to sit in the budget meetings this past April, May, and understand how the budget's put together for our current school system. We, the county commissioners and the school board gave a 1% increase, and we'd like to thank them for that.
Mr. Ronald Johnson?
My top three objectives would be students, students, and students. Well, what I want to do is I want to increase college and career readiness. A lot of our students graduate high school, they just graduate high school, they don't go to college, they struggle to find jobs, they make minimum wage jobs. That's not fair to our students. If we're graduating high school and not preparing them for life, then we're failing. So what I'd like to do is what I mentioned before, the biowork certification in the school system. There is a great program in place, More With Four, where you can get a two-year degree and I'm all about that, but I want to see our kids get these certifications that allow them to go to work in a ten, fifteen dollar an hour paying job immediately after high school so they can work their way through JCC, they can transfer to a four-year school, or they can make a decent living with what we can give them in Johnston County schools. So increased college and career readiness is number one on my list. Number two, and I see some friends out there, I see you Ms. Jeffrey, I see you Mr. Burgess, Ms. Spade, thank you for coming tonight. I'm going to try to keep you employed with the Johnston County schools because your great employees and your dedication to our students can't be matched. So I'm going to get you more money, I want to pay you more, I want to increase the teacher's supplement, I want to give you a reason to stay in Johnston County schools because so many of my friends and so many great teachers have left us and gone to Wake County. And all too often I hear we can't compete, we can compete. We're going to ask for more money if I'm on that school board, I promise you that. And lastly, we're going to continue to make the classroom a priority. And when I say that, it means we're going to keep class sizes down in some instances in our key courses. And what I'd like to do is maybe increase the size in our general ed courses that may be like your physical education or some other classes that doesn't focus on our STEM education, which is our science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. We need smaller sizes than those so we can prepare our students for college. And I appreciate what everyone's saying up here, we all do have to work together and one person cannot get it done, but in law enforcement, and I see Creighton, I see Jeffrey out there, when you're responding to something, you got to have a plan. So don't go in without a plan and I'm coming to you with a plan in 2016.
All right, thank you. We'll start with Teresa Grant for the next question. If elected and if you join a Republican-majority school board in Johnston County, will you commit tonight to electing a Republican school board chairman?
Well, that's not going to take two minutes. Yes, I do. I think that we have a person that's currently sitting on the school board that is very capable of being a chairman of the school board. There will be a lot of new faces on there, so we're going to need some strong leadership and I think we have someone who can do that job.
Thank you. Mr. Sutton?
Absolutely. I think we currently have some great leaders, Republican leaders, on the school board today. And if I am elected, I would love to see that trend continue with a Republican chairman leading our school board into the next year.
Mr. Johnson?
It's going to be a little different here. I'm a Republican, I want to see a Republican chairman, but when I get on the school board, I'm going to evaluate who's the best for that position. I don't care if you're a Democrat, you're a member of the Tea Party, the Green Party, the Whig Party, the Federalist Party, if you come to help children, I'll stand beside you.
Thank you, sir. For eight years, we have had a Republican majority, a Republican chair, and if you walked into the boardroom, you would not be able to tell who was Democrat or who was Republican. It is not about partisan politics, it is about children. And no one on that board has put politics above the needs of children, no one on that board has put politics above the needs of teachers, no one on that board has put politics above the needs of principals and people who run those schools. It is a conservative board, it is a child-centered board. And yes, we will have a Republican chair, but you will not be able to walk in that room and tell who's who, and I hope it continues to be that way. As Ronald said, we've got to elect the best people for that school board because it's best for children and that's what we're all about for a lifetime. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll start back with Mr. Todd Sutton for the next question. In light of the controversy around HB2 and what the Charlotte Beckenburg schools have done, what is your stance on allowing transgender students to use the bathroom or locker room of their choice?
Well, I'm going to have to take a stand on what the Bible says. I'm all about faith and my take is I would stand just like our governor made a stance and whatever gender you were born with, I would do the same thing. I think that we're going about it the wrong way, we're making a big deal out of this. However, I understand that it's in society, things are getting different than the way we were brought up, but I would take a firm stance in making sure that our kids are safe on a daily basis. And I have two kids in the school system, I had these conversations already, I want to make sure they're safe as well and when my daughter goes to the bathroom, I don't have to worry about who she's in there with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ronald Johnson?
I have a question for the audience. Give me a round of applause if you think Johnston County's got it right, we're doing the right things and we're doing what we need to be doing to set an example for the state. Give me a round of applause if you think that. I think we're doing what's right, I'm with the traditional model, we don't need to change anything. I look back maybe seven months ago before all this got started and I'm wondering, what was so bad about society that now that we bring it up, we have people protesting in the street? I'm with the traditional model, I have a sister that goes to Triple S, I have a brother that goes to Triple S. Certainly, I'm tolerant of all walks of life and I am a Christian, but we had it right to start with until the issues got brought up. Whoever brought it up, it doesn't matter to me, I stand with the traditional bathroom model.
Thank you very much. I'm going to probably shock you when I tell you that Johnston County has transgender children in the elementary school. I will not shock you to tell you that we have not had an issue with the bathroom because they use their birth restroom, they use their birth locker room. If they choose not to do so, they are assigned an adult bathroom. That has not been an issue and I pray with all my heart that it doesn't become an issue because like my colleagues, we would have to say, this is the rule, you use your gender of birth and not your gender of preference. These children have very supportive parents and we have not had any confrontations. I believe, as Teresa has said, it's because there are relationships of those administrators in those buildings who care for these children and who don't want to create an issue. But trust me, they will create an issue if we start having confrontations about restroom use. I appreciate your opportunity to answer that question, it has not come up in a public forum, so thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Grant?
I guess ditto is not appropriate. I'm very proud of our state legislators that stood by the traditional bathroom scenario and for our governor who has continued to stand by the bathrooms being for the bathroom for the sex of your birth. I absolutely think that is the correct way for things to be. As I said, I have two grandkids that are in public schools, like Todd, I don't want to worry about who's coming in the bathroom with them. So I absolutely agree that the bathroom should be for the sex of your birth.
Thank you very much. And this next one starts off with Ronald Johnson and it's about school safety. Do you feel that schools are safe in Johnston County? And also, another question, how do you feel about teachers, should they be able to conceal carry if trained properly?
I do think schools are safe in Johnston County, being a school resource officer. I've seen the great teachers in Johnston County do what needs to be done, take the training that they need to train to ensure that our children are safe on a daily basis. As far as a concealed carry goes, I believe the law is appropriate now where we can allow armed arms on school if you're a concealed carry holder, however, it has to be locked in the trunk of the car. I'm for that law and I'm for the guidelines set by that law. But being a school resource officer, I can say, I believe our schools are safe, we've got some great school resource officers, but it can happen anywhere at any time. You've got to be vigilant, whether you're a teacher or principal, custodian, or even students, we encourage them to pay attention to what's unsafe and suspicious activity around them. With that being said, I'm an advocate for having a school resource officer at every single school in Johnston County. When I was a school resource officer, I would vouch from school to school, Smithfield Middle School, Triple S sometimes, even South Smithfield Elementary. It doesn't take one of our students wanting to hurt another student. It takes someone wanting to come on our campus and hurt our kids. So as taxpayers, as parents, as teachers, we've got to make the tough decision to put school resource officers in every single school in Johnston County. I will tell you some stories. I've wrestled with kids, I've fought with kids who had a gun in their backpack, it's on record. I know the potential firsthand. We can talk about school safety as a political point, as a platform, but I've been there when people wanted to come on campus and hurt our kids. I've been there when bomb threats have been called in and suspicious packages found. I've been there to lock a school down armed with multiple officers because the highway patrol had a helicopter in the woods across from Triple S and Smithfield Middle School hunting someone who was dangerous to our kids. I've been there.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you, like Ronald Johnson, as a principal, I too have confiscated guns when I was in your stock at Gras Smithfield, back then, Smithfield-Selma Middle School, have wrestled children to the floor who were carrying knives. Those are things that our school leaders take for granted, that they have those situations and they are very well-trained to deal with those situations. The other thing that Ronald mentioned is that the law has been passed, we do have very strict guidelines. We have now used some of our facilities' money to put different locks on our door, the fob locks, so that they are not opened to passersby. The other thing that we have put into our $100 billion needs are walls so that any visitor is diverted to the office, there's no just coming into the building and walking down the hallway. Should those funds come available in the next few years, our schools will have those diversionary walls so that when you come, you enter into the office only, you can't go until you get through the office personnel. The safety of our children depends on our children and the reason that Mr. Johnson and I have had those experiences because children came to us, they trust the adults in charge of their well-being and those children come and say, yeah, I think he might have a weapon down the hall. You check it out and you take care of business. It depends on our children and building the relationships with them that save them from harm.
Thank you very much. And this is Teresa Grant?
Well, recently it came out that North Carolina was the 11th safest school system in the nation. So that says an awful lot about the emphasis that has been put on safety in our state and much of that is some of the things that Peggy talked about, making it not as accessible for people to get in that should not be in there. A concealed and carry permit does not make someone an expert. Trust me, I have a concealed and carry permit and I'm not an expert. My reflexes would not be the same as Ronald's, who is a trained law enforcement officer, so I would like to see more time spent on education of what to do for a hostile intruder. I'm a safety officer also with the Department of Ag and so that is one of the things that I train heavily on with my department, is what to do in those scenarios. And the best thing that we could do is to educate our teachers and our administrators and our students so that it's second nature to them what to do in the event of a hostile intruder. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Todd Sutton?
I do believe all of our schools in Johnston County are safe. However, as I stated before, we need to continue to be proactive and make sure safety procedures are in place at every school and that the law enforcement has a model of the safety procedures as well and the protocols that are put in place so that when they get on the campus, they're not questioning certain things and what's going on. There's procedures already in place and checks and balances. As being on the Johnston County Ed Foundation, I've been in a lot of schools that you can still go in the front door and never have to enter to the office to check in. I brought some of that back to Glendale Kinley and it's basically just a rope across the front, it's keeping the honest person going into the office, it's not going to keep an intruder from getting down the school. So we need to make sure that we have walls all in our schools and make sure they enter through the office and sign in and people know that they're there. The Hyatt associates were there today talking about key fobs for safety. We need to continue that, every school needs to have the key fobs for safety so that they don't have to continue to unlock doors so that they can come in and out from recess or what the case may be. Having a wife as a teacher, I'd be scared to death to have, you know, her understanding, have a concealed carry. So a lot goes into that. Yes, anybody can have a concealed carry to a certain degree, but as has been stated, there's a lot more that goes into it for concealed carry. I think we need to make sure that our teachers continue to focus on the students and what they have at hand to teach them what they need to learn for the day, rather than having to worry about what they're going to do and how they're going to get to their concealed carry or whatever the case may be, and then focus on something else rather than the students that came to school to learn that day. Thank you.
All right. Peggy Smith, this next question, we'll start with you. And this is a bit of a complex question, but it deals with Dr. Ross Renfro, Superintendent of Johnston County Schools. What do you think of the hiring process as secured him? The contract given to him, his performance so far, and his vision for the future?
I got a couple of those parts, could you repeat it please?
Yeah, sure. What do you think of the hiring process, the contract, his performance so far, and his vision for the future of Johnston County schools?
What an easy question. I participated in the hiring of both Dr. Ed Kruen and Dr. Ross Renfro. Now, we could have spent better than $100,000 going outside the system, hiring a firm to look for a superintendent for us. Instead, we focused on what was best for Johnston County schools in both cases. The hiring process was I contacted every principal in the district and said, what do you want in a new superintendent? They said, someone Kruen-like. Do you want to go outside, inside? They said, inside. Is there anyone in our district who fits that criteria? Yeah, Ross Renfro. So the process was collaborative, but very clear from the beginning that we had our man sitting down the hall, being trained for four years under Ed Kruen. His contract and, thank you for asking this question, lots of things were said in the media. What wasn't in the media were that our first superintendent, Ed Kruen, made $25,000 less than the previous superintendent and that my dad did a better job. He never got a salary increase in his eight years, his compensation package did not change in eight years. Now, how he spent that package did change. Ross Renfro's contract is the very same as Ed Kruen's, which I remind you, was less than the previous superintendent. His performance so far, we could not have dreamed of a better superintendent. This man has two ears and a tongue and he will tell you that that was God-given for a reason. He listens and speaks very little, but when he does, people listen. Ask anybody you choose to talk with and they will tell you that his performance is superb as a superintendent. As a passionate person, he lost his wife, he knows what it's like to have, be a single parent or rear a child. His vision for the future is Joko 2020. Thank you.
Teresa Grant? And I'll be happy to repeat this question if you need to.
Please.
Okay? Based on your interactions with Dr. Ross Renfro, Superintendent of Johnston County Schools, what do you think of the hiring process, the contract given to him, his performance so far, and his vision for the future?
Okay. As a manager, I've hired hundreds, maybe even thousands of people in my career and anytime you have someone that's tried and true, you know their performance, you understand their strengths and weaknesses, you've worked along them side by side, if that person is the right person for the job and you know that because of that experience with them, I would take a known over an unknown anytime. People can interview well, people can look good on paper and you can get them in and they can't do the job. So kudos to this board for making the decision to hire Dr. Renfro. As far as his contract, I know going from the associate superintendent to superintendent was a big leap, but that's the way that things work in the state hiring process as well. As I said, I'm a state employee and when I hire someone that goes up so many grade levels, their salary is going to jump accordingly. And he wasn't an inexperienced guy, so I think it was based on his experience and the way the salary ranges and progressions work for the state, I don't have a problem with his contract. Interactions with him so far and what kind of a job he's doing, I think he is awesome. I've had the opportunity to work with him and talk with him on many occasions. I mean, the first thing he did when he came on board was to have the kitchen table discussions at all the schools, well, not at all the schools, but at certain schools and each school was invited to attend. And the parents and the teachers were there, I attended a kitchen table discussion, I got to listen to the interaction between the parents and the teachers and he listened and he took those ideas and he's working on that.
Thank you. Mr. Sutton?
I commend the board, the current board, of the conservative approach of the hiring process. They could have gone outside and spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to find Dr. Ross Renfro, who was just sitting one chair away from Dr. Ed Kruen. This is a gentleman that did not come from the outside, he grew up in Johnston County, he walked the halls of Johnston County schools as a student. He taught in Johnston County schools as well as others, but he came back home. He was an assistant principal, a principal, he was assistant superintendent. So he's met all the criteria, so I commend the board on hiring someone that already knows our county and knows the system of the Johnston County public schools. It would take a lot for somebody from the outside to come in and learn the process. As well, as far as his contract goes, it's two different pay scales. In the media, it said 95%, 93%, but it's the same as an assistant principal going to a principal, it's a different pay scale. So when you put all that in perspective, his contract was well in line with what he deserved. His vision, like they've said, he came out, he wanted to hit the ground running. He had some big shoes to fill with Dr. Ed Kruen, however, he's got his own agenda and I think he's doing a very good job with his vision. The kitchen roundtable meetings, I was a part of one of those, I appreciated him doing that. I appreciated him going out on the first day of school and being at each school, 175 miles, and shaking hands of the kids and some of the parents and teachers to be in there on that first day. The video blogs that he's implemented are second to none. I heard from just recently, two weeks ago, that this has been submitted down to a school system in Florida and the superintendent in this area is going to do this as well. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I'd just start by saying, Dr. Renfro is the man for the job, he is the best candidate, they got the decision right, the school board did when they selected Dr. Ross Renfro. However, it's going to be a little different. I would like to have seen a hiring process I would like to have seen a hiring process done, not necessarily one that would cost $100,000, but at least let us take applications. I've had experience now with the Smithfield Police Department. We've been through three chiefs, and you never know who's going to apply for a position. We could get a candidate that's outstanding, that we may need to take a second look at. I grew up in Smithfield, I walked these halls of Triple S, I graduated from here in 2001. I don't necessarily think that makes me a shoe-in for the school board, but to close up that point, I think Dr. Renfro is the man for the job, and he's doing a great job. We talked about his performance. I love what he's doing, getting involved with social media. I see him on my Facebook feed more than I see my relatives. I've tried to get a nickname for him, calling him Rockstar Ross, but I can't get it to stick, so if you guys can help me do that, I would appreciate it. His vision, Joko 2020, is great. I love the concept, I love the ideas he has planned. His contract, there was a lot of news media about this contract, how much money he was getting paid, how there was no process. I would like to spend more time talking about our teacher's salary than a salary of our superintendent that's done and gone. That salary's there, Dr. Renfro's going to be okay. I'm concerned about our teachers in Johnston County School that make 73% of the national average. We need to get that up to 100%, and then we can come back and revisit someone else's salary. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, everybody likes to eat, and we all know that nutrition and food is very important. So, what I want to know, if you know about the school lunches? Are they good? Are they nutritious? Are they delicious? That's important, and we've got some kids out here. I bet it's important to you guys that, or students, right? You want good food. And another question, are the students allotted enough time to eat? So I want to know, are you happy with the, with the food? And do they have enough time to eat? Teresa Graham?
Well, I have attended grandparents' day on many occasions between the two grandchildren, and so I have had the pleasure to sit down and eat the school lunches. Are they nutritious? They can be. The children, the ones that have the selection of which things they pick, they may not always pick the most nutritious things. Are they delicious? Again, it depends on what you pick. As an adult eating, I don't think they're very delicious. My grandchildren seem to enjoy them. So I think it's a matter of perspective. I said, are they healthy? It's going to depend on their selection, and they're given those choices of, of what to pick. Can you repeat?
Yeah, and do you feel that the students are allotted enough time to eat?
All the time, during the time. I have only attended lunch for elementary school kids, and I would say that as far as the grandkids go, we had plenty of time to enjoy lunch, and talk together, and interact with their friends. I don't know about any of our parents.
Thank you very much. Mr. Todd Sutton?
Well, I hear about school lunches a lot with two students in the school system. To say that they pack their lunches 95% of the time just lets me know that they may not be as good to them as they would like them to be. As far as nutrition goes, I have gone through the elementary schools and ate lunch with my daughter on numerous occasions. They do seem to have some nutrition there. However, there's a difference what these kids can eat and the time that they have. I've sat with my wife, with her kindergarten class, and some of the fruit and things that they have to eat are still frozen. They can't even eat it. So we, we could do a better job of, of making sure that they get the same service across the county, and everything is, if they want to eat the fruit, they'll have the opportunity to eat it. The only days that I know that my daughter did not pack her lunch on Fiesta Days, and I would always attend that day, because who doesn't love pizza? But, so, there is some good nutrition in our schools. However, we need to make sure that we continue to make sure that the items that they can choose are they, they're able to eat, rather than still being frozen, and not giving the opportunity to have some of this nutrition through the fruit. Allowed enough time, we, we had about 30 minutes for my daughter. I think that's plenty of time in the elementary, in the elementary setting. Middle school and high school, unfortunately, the parents don't get to go and sit down and eat with their kids, and we're not cool anymore. But, from listening to my son talk, I think they have enough time. However, from a teacher's standpoint, I can tell when my wife gets home at night, that they, she rushes to get through dinner, because she doesn't have enough time. So, on both sides, it may not be as much for the teachers, because they're preparing and helping their students. So I think we probably could do a little bit better job of making sure they get a proper nutritional lunch.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ronald Johnson?
Well, I'll start by answering the question, is it delicious? Yes, it is. I worked in the school for five years, and I want to thank Dr. Ed Crew for buying my lunch every day I would work at that school. And if he's watching, I appreciate it. I'm going to start light, but I'm going to end with some serious stuff. Let me answer your question. Nutritious is nutritious enough. We offer nutritional alternatives, but kids want to eat pizzas, kids want to eat peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, they want to eat the cheeseburger, they don't want to go for the salad. And at their age, sometimes they can afford to do that, and sometimes they can't. It has to be studied on a case-by-case basis. And I know it would be difficult to identify who needs an alternative eating plan, but if we're going to take it to the next level, we need to do that. Enough time, they get plenty of time. I stood in a cafeteria every day for five years of my life. They have plenty of time, they have time to socialize. Sometimes during the end of grade testing, it feels like they, they're herded in, spate, you know, Jeffrey, you can appreciate that, they're herded in, herded out, just because of the scheduling of the testing. But on an average day, they have plenty of time. And I know it sounds like I'm having some trouble answering this question, because something comes to mind. Working in a Title I school, spate, Mr. Gather, I'll see someone in the crowd that can identify with this, Raquan Katie, you know some of our students. They don't eat like they need to eat. They come in that door Monday morning, they're hungry, because they haven't had anything to eat all weekend. Sometimes that meal that they get at school, the breakfast and lunch, is all they get. You should stand in the doorway of a school and watch the kids, these quote-unquote troublemakers who always want to laugh and cut up. They come in with a serious look on their face with a beeline to the cafeteria, because they haven't had anything to eat. That's a serious question we need to talk about as far as nutrition goes. That's what we need to focus on, we need to get a community outreach thing going. And I know the school can't solve all the problems, but unfortunately for the school there, the position solves the most problems. I did that when I was a school resource officer, I got out there, I got these kids' foods on the weekend, I had an opportunity, and I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We have another question. Land water, hold on. All right, Mr. Peggy Smith?
Well, for those of you who don't know, we no longer have local control over the menu. That is federally dictated, because we get federal funds to feed the children who do not have money to pay for lunch. Lunches are subsidized for everyone except teachers. Nutritious, probably. My husband used to work in a cafeteria. He said, "A little ham instead of that garlic would make those string beans edible. Why don't we do it?" And they said, "We can't do that, because the federal government says we can't." I don't know who would have found out, because I never would have told, I'd just be glad to have a good meal. The other thing that, about the time, children do have enough time to eat, but it was the teachers I worried about. The greatest gift I ever gave my staff was to work it out, except for kindergarten, and they chose to do it themselves. The greatest gift I ever gave them was duty-free lunch. When my husband and I go out to eat, I'm, and he's just finishing his salad, because when I took children to the cafeteria, I had 10 minutes to eat. I didn't even know what I had on my plate, I had to eat it so fast. Teachers need time to eat. The children have time to eat and socialize, but the teachers do not. And if we can, if we can go back to working out duty-free lunch, and we did that with assistance, before assistance got cut, then we would have a greater enjoyment of the, of the lunch period. Thank you for letting me answer that question.
Thank, thank you. And that's what I was saying, is the next question is kind of a follow-up to what Ronald's talking about. So 46% of Johnston County School students receive free or reduced lunch. Do you support a summer program designed for them to get free breakfast and lunch during the summer break? We start with Todd Sutton. Sorry.
Absolutely. Five years ago, my wife had a vision in our church to create a Backpack for Buddies program. We started out with 10 students at Glendale Kinley Elementary that the social worker identified, and the parents were okay with them taking backpacks home on the weekends. But as soon as she started this vision, I started worrying about it over the summer break. How could we help them over summer? Because those kids still had to eat after the school year was over. This program has gone to over four, grown to over 40 students currently at Glendale Kinley Elementary, which, there's more being identified, but the parents have not approved it yet. I would love to see a program where we can continue to feed these students over the summer break, because if we don't, nobody else is. And another thing, if there was two kids in the family, and only one of them was able to get the backpack, we heard stories of where they were fighting over who was going to eat the food in the backpack. We throw enough food away in one night to feed a kid for a week. We need to make sure that we continue to focus on these students, whether they're in our possession at the school, or it's over summer break. We need to make sure that we can provide food for them, because they are the future of our county and state in, in a lot of capacities. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Summer programs that help feed our children, absolutely. That's an easy question. What we need to do is think of a way that we can incorporate some type of learning for those kids who we're having the opportunity to make contact with, because they're going to be receptive of us, they need us, and we need to be there for them. So our kids who are struggling in these low-income, poverty-stricken situations, that we can't even appreciate in this room, I've got some fellow officers in here, they know what it's like to go to a house and see a two, or three, or 12-year-old ridden, house ridden in bedbugs, filled, no food in the refrigerator, no parent in the house. What better way to help a child than to give them something they need in food? But also give them an additional opportunity during the summer to better prepare themselves for the upcoming school year. Let's take it to the next level. Let's teach them while we feed them, and we can make a difference in our kids' lives.
Ms. Graham?
Thank you. We do have two alternative calendar schools in Johnston County, which reduces the amount of time between summer, end of school and beginning of school. We also offer summer school, those times when children continue to get food at their schools. Yes, we need to help children prepare to learn. We offer that learning, we offer those meals during those times. What I'd really like to see is parent education. Children need to, need to grow up seeing their parents being responsible for them. And if we can do a parent education program, just to help parents understand the nutritional needs of their children. I watch grocery carts sometimes at the grocery store, and they spend a good week's salary on food, but it's potato chips and cookies. And if we could help educate parents to help feed the children correctly, then that would solve two problems. I appreciate the question.
Ms. Graham?
It's a, to me, that's a tough question, because, one, we have budget issues currently with trying to operate our schools during the hours that they're currently open, and pay our teachers appropriately, renovate the schools, build new schools. So money does have to be there to be able to do something like that, and we have to make sure that it doesn't take away from one of the other necessities. As Peggy said, we do have summer school academy, there's also summer reading academy, and I don't know if the lunches are incorporated in the reading academy. So there are two programs that students can take advantage of that. If there could be other type programs, like Ronald said, it should incorporate learning, not just the lunch, and that's two ways that we can do that, and there could possibly be, possibly be other programs where we could, or what could utilize that.
This question will start with Mr. Ronald Johnson. All right. Teacher salary supplements in Johnston County account for around $1.9 million in this next budget request. Do you support increasing, decreasing, or is the teacher supplement just about right?
Another easy question. We need to increase it. I've posted on Facebook, said it in public many times, that if you elect me on the school board, I'll do whatever I can. If I had to go by myself, I know it's a team effort, you've got to work with the board, but I will do my best to advocate to the county commissioners to raise the teacher supplement every year. And they have raised it 1%, and I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but it's moving in the right direction. But I think we can get it comparable to Wake County. I think if we evaluate the cost of living in Johnston, evaluate the cost of living in Wake, the county commissioners, the taxpayers, the teachers need to be paid for what they do. So my message to them is, I'm going to ask for more money. If we had to reallocate funds in the budget, a lot of our budgets, you know, already allocated, federal mandates, state mandates, but no matter what we have to do, we've got to get it competitive with Wake County, because we're losing money in the long run. Our children's quality of life is being impacted, so we can save a couple cents a week by not paying our teachers the money that is in there.
Ms. Peggy Smith?
Thank you. First of all, our supplements are not competitive with Wake County. We are competitive with our other surrounding districts. For your information, it takes $1.9 million to give 1% in budget, in, in salary supplements. We have done that four times in the last eight years, even in the face of a recession. Somehow, we found money, and the commissioners supported the increase in supplements. Is it enough? No. I, I would like to say, though, that people who go to Wake County find that they come back, because there's quality of life which is more important to some people than money. That is not an excuse for not doing more for our teachers. We need to do everything we can. The other thing that I will say for your information is that we have given classified staff, those of your bus drivers, your cafeteria workers, secretaries, custodians, teacher assistants, a bonus every year. They are our lowest-paid employees, and they live in the communities, they go to the road route, they go to your churches, they need support in monetary ways as well. Those bonuses and salary increases cost money, and Ronald is right, you have to set the big rocks, you have to set that priority, and it has been a priority, and every year when we can afford a salary increase, we have done that, and we will continue to do that. In fact, we're already trying to project how we're going to spend $100 million on facilities and still find $1.9 billion for salary increases. Please don't understand, $100 million is not going to be our lump sum, this is pieces. You do think in pieces, but you also do salary supplements when it is possible, and we hope to increase as often as possible.
Ms. Teresa Graham?
I agree with Peggy that it's something that we need to do, whenever it is possible. As I said, we do have budget constraints, and we have to make sure that we have the teachers there, that we have the facility here, that we have everything else that the children need. And certainly, as someone who's worked with budgets, I look forward to the opportunity to look at our budgets and see where we can cut, and where we can make increases. I'm also thankful to our General Assembly for the increases that they've given some of the teachers as well. I know that the younger teachers got a bigger raise than the more mature teachers, and there were some upset people over that. As a state employee, I have people that have been working for me for 30 years that make a whole lot of money compared to some of my newer employees that do the same job and have only been there 10 years. So those teachers who've been there for a long time, there was a disparity between their salary and some of the younger teachers, and I think the General Assembly did a good job in trying to correct some of that issue. I do promise to do my part to look at the budget each time. Like I said, I have experience working with budgets, I have experience working with salaries, and getting raises, and all that type. and getting raises and all that type thing as a lab director, as a manager, and building morale, that's a good portion of what salary adjustments can do. I've talked to several teachers who said that they would never leave here to go to Wake County, because quality of life, quality of teaching is better here than there. They wish they made more money, but it was not as much of an incentive for them to leave, and I appreciate that. But yes, we need to do our part to help them.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
I think we need to continue to focus on our teachers. That is one of the main reasons that a lot of families from the outside move into Johnston County because of the caliber of teachers that we currently have. We can implement a three-to-five-year plan. This will help us continue to maintain and retain the veteran teachers and the teachers that, highly qualified teachers that have been leaving our county and going to Wake County for increasing supplement. At least this is giving them an opportunity to see that we are focused on them, and their best interest is at heart with us, because we don't want to continue to be the training bed where new teachers come into Johnston County. We train them, we spend a lot of money and focus on them, and then they move out of the county and go to Wake County for the higher supplement. So we have to continue as a board to make this a main focus on a yearly basis, so that we can make sure that not only our teachers are taken care of, but the students that are walking their classrooms have the ability to have the best teacher possible to teach them in the particular grade that they're in, and make sure that the teachers are not worried about their income and how they're going to pay their bills from our local standpoint, so that they can do what they love to do, and that's teach our kids. So yes, we need to continue to focus on our teachers as well as our classified staff, because without the classified staff, we wouldn't have anybody to feed our kids, to bus our kids, and so forth. So they're just as important, so we need to make sure on both sides of the spectrum that we're taking care of every employee with the Johnston County Schools.
All right. Next question will start with Peggy Smith. We've talked a lot about different ideas and different programs, which cost taxpayer money? Would you favor either a tax increase or some kind of funding mechanism increase to pay for some of the ideas that we discussed today?
Actually, no. Again, it's a matter of priorities. Would I like to have a 15-cent tax increase and get all $100 million of repairs done next week? Yes, that would be wonderful, but what it would do to the other economy of this county would not be economically feasible. If you look at the money that we bring into our system and the needs that we have, which are huge, if we take money from the citizens in this county to fund that all at one time, we have a mess. We can't do that. Taxes, let me just go back and say it this way, schools belong to the taxpayers. Do they want the best school system in the state? We haven't. Have we needs that we could use more money? Yes, we do. But at the same time, I don't want the citizens of our county to lose faith in our schools as being frugal or not being frugal with their tax dollars. If we had a failing school system, I'd be knocking on your door for 10 cents tomorrow, but we don't, and that's because we have conservative values that keep our school system focused on the main thing, which is academic achievement, best in the state. Go look it up, I'm not bragging, that's fact. Our facilities are second to none, even though we have roofs that need to be repaired, we have air conditioners that need to be replaced, we have facilities second to none. Our buses run on time, our meals are served on time, we have the greatest employees on the planet. So to answer your question, no, we don't. Thank you very much. Ms. Teresa Grant?
I agree with Peggy that raising taxes would cause more problems than it would help, and people move here to our county, one, because we have the best schools in the state. The other reason they move here is because we have reasonable taxes, and taking more money out of people's pockets are not going to, are not going to help. As Peggy said, we have some of the best schools in the state. The State Board of Education just reported that Johnston County schools scored 6% over the state average, with 81% of our schools scoring C or higher, and that's with the accountability model. Dr. Redford doesn't like the accountability model, which puts 80% on the performance on end of grade testing and 20% on growth. He thinks it should be reversed, that it should be 80% growth, which is how does a student progress from the beginning of the year to the end of the year? And if you do that, our schools score even better. Some of the ones that we call our low-performing schools are actually good-performing schools if you change that model to look at that, and the growth of the students is what's important. So we have a superintendent that's willing to try to get money. He went to our county commissioners and asked for $31 million to make renovations. Most of that's children, HVAC roof repairs, and I think the county commissioners agreed to that. We didn't get a bond on the ballot in March to try to get money to build new schools and do some of the other things that we need in the school, and maybe other avenues. Senator Reardon said he'd be willing to try to get an exception for us for that.
Thank you very much. And Toddson?
I don't believe that increasing taxes will help us in any way. I'm not for increasing taxes to increase teacher supplements and so forth, unless we've exhausted all of our other means to try to find this money. However, funding mechanisms, when you're talking about building schools, there's really only two outlets. One is banks. And right now, with no bond on the table for 2016, we have to look elsewhere, and that's what the board came into an agreement and asked Dr. Redford to go to the county commissioners and present to them from a standpoint based upon the height associates' model and recommendations of all of our schools in our county. So he presented that with the $30 million to help with the facilities that we currently have, to make sure that we update them in the means that they need, especially the 20-plus schools, 20 years or more have the most needs for updates. The other way we can fund these mechanisms is through bonds, and that gives us, allows us a lower rate and makes sure that we maintain our tax basis that we currently have. But we all can do this last thing and my last point. We can shop local, we can talk to our principals and assistant principals and teachers and ask them if there's a filter up that they can take in Johnston County that can do just as good as our neighboring counties. Let's keep that money here in the county, because it helps keep our coffers of money full, therefore, it lowers our tax basis and it keeps everything within Johnston County. I was just talking to somebody the other day that has an ag farm educational program. There are schools within three miles of there that have not visited that program at this, right around the corner from this location. We're going 40 or 50 miles at $1.50 apiece, so we can stay within the county and do the same programs and lower our rates.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ronald Johnson?
The question was, would you be in favor of a tax increase to pay for the ideas we've presented tonight? My answer is no, and that may seem a little contradictory, because I presented a lot of ideas. First thing I've talked about several times is my public safety academy, where fire departments, EMS, and eventually police would have training facilities. The police would be more of a textbook-based course, but the fire department and the EMS programs would be a hands-on learning program where kids would learn firefighter one and two while they're in high school. Simple question, who's going to pay for that, right? I've spoken with leaders in the town of Smithfield, the town of Selma, the town of Pine Level, and I'm not exaggerating this word, they are begging for this program. They want this program, they want the opportunity to get firefighter one and two, fire science, and all their training, and everything good that goes with being a volunteer in your community as a firefighter. They're willing to do that through a memorandum of understanding, a MOU as they call it, where they provide the equipment, they provide the tools needed to hold the course. That in itself takes the expense away from the school system and places it on the town. Whichever respective town decides to sponsor it, they're lining up wanting to sponsor it. I'll say the towns again, Pine Level, Selma, and Smithfield. There may be more, but those are the three I know of. I've talked about bio work, which requires a lot of equipment to get certified in. Fortunately for us, on Bestwood Drive in Clayton, Johnston Community College already has this facility. Now, they may not let us use their facility, it may not be appropriate to use their facility, but we have Novo Nordus and Griffiths, two economic giants in our community, that supersede any other vocational program we could offer in the Johnston County school system. I mentioned earlier, they had a $2 billion expansion. That's not total, that's just their expansion this year. What better way to prepare our students for life than give them the training they need to work for our economic jobs?
Thank you so very much. All right, and I think we have one last question. You guys excited?
We're very excited, it's the last one.
Well, and it's actually kind of a simple yes or no, if you ask me. So do you support using taxpayer dollars for private school vouchers? Teresa Grant?
I'd like for parents to have any opportunities that they can have for their children. I would like for our public schools to be the best public schools that they can be, so that this is the answer that they want. Also concerned about how our taxpayer money is spent, because we have a lot of other needs that need to be met, including needing the money for teacher supplements. So, no, I don't support taxpayer money for vouchers.
Thank you very much. Ms. Toddson?
No, I do not support private vouchers as well, because I think that the public school system, we have teachers that go to school to educate themselves for a passion that they want to be with kids. Yes, every student has the opportunity, and we ought to provide every student the opportunity and parents. However, we can spend that, those taxpayer dollars better by increasing salaries across the board for our teachers, increasing supplements for our teachers, increasing the salary for our classified employees. I think that we could do a better job with our money rather than giving private vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
I'll say I don't like it. My good friend Jordan Jeffrey is in the audience, and he's a school resource officer at this charter school. I've had the opportunity to go to the charter school and speak, and I know we're talking about private vouchers, but I do have an issue with taking taxpayer money away from the public school system and sending it elsewhere. 13% of Johnston County school budget goes to fund charter schools. But my message to Johnston County schools, and this is coming as a coach, this is coming with someone who's got an MBA, in business and in athletics, you compete or you go home. How you compete is you pay your teachers more, you make your classrooms safer, and you give teachers and students what they need in a classroom to succeed. You give them career options, you give them alternatives, you make it a place they want to be. And if we invest in our schools and create these viable programs, then we're going to take our kids back from the charter school. Sorry, Jordan, but they're going to come back.
Peggy Smith?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I've had grandchildren in Ohio in private school, but their choice was a failing school. I've had another granddaughter in Wake County who went to a charter school, I said private in Ohio, yes, charter school here, because the school to which she was assigned was a failing school. In Johnston County, that is not the choice. We are the best game in town, and if you don't believe it, go to the website and look up the data. No F schools, no failing schools. Your tax dollars are working very, very hard, and to give those tax dollars, I have suggested even to the legislators, legislators, to give charter schools its own funding stream. I don't have time to answer this as much as I need to, but you can't, you don't lose a bus, a teacher, a principal when, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. And we'll do the closing remarks, and we'll do it in reverse order, to be fair, and we have a few minutes left after everybody does their closing remarks, if anybody would like to individually ask questions of you, one-on-one. So we'll start with Teresa Grant for the closing statement, and we'll work backwards.
I want to thank everybody again for coming out and being interested in what these candidates have to say. I want to say that I consider everyone sitting up here to be a friend, and I consider it to be a privilege to work with any one of these folks on board. I think everyone has best interest at heart for the teachers and for the students, and as many have said, one person can't do anything alone, so we have to be good collaborators and work together. I have been a collaborator on many national committees where we have to reach consensus for standards with chemists all over this country, and so I understand what it is to reach a common goal. Excuse me. From the day I decided to run for school board, I have been out there, I have been everywhere. I have people come up to me all the time and say, "I know who you are, because I see you out there everywhere," from attending PTA meetings to choral concerts and dance concerts right here in this auditorium. And if you want to help some students and teachers show up here when they have them, because when I was here, it was a third of the way full or a quarter of the way full, and these kids were up there dancing and singing their hearts out. So come show your support. I went to all of, many of the elementary school talent shows, and I have filled the bus, and I have filled the window with school supplies, dropped off school supplies here at Triple S last week, when they had, you could drop by the carpool line and drop off. I've handed out school supplies, been at all day at the Clayton Rec Center. I've put myself out there to be in contact with teachers and parents, so that, one, they know who I am, they already feel like they have a relationship with me, and are willing to talk to me and let me know what their issues are, what their concerns are, and that won't stop once I'm elected. Someone said, "Are you still wanting, just promised me you will continue to be out there after you're elected?" I said, "I promise you I will still be out there, but I promise you I won't be somewhere every night," as has been the case. Again, thank you so much for coming out, and thank you again to the party for putting on this forum.
Peggy Smith?
Thank you, and again, thank you to the Republican Party for doing this. Thank you for all of your time and coming out and listening to this. It is a delight to see so many interested people. Johnston County Schools is the best in the state. Our dropout rates are down, graduation rates are up. If you read the News and Review, which is the only newspaper to carry the good news, you will see how above the state our achievement really is, and remember that achievement is the name of the game. Judge Manning said this at Campbell University several years ago, "It's not about money, it's about leadership. It's about setting those priorities and making those hard decisions that a school board has to make." Without funding authority, mind you, we only work with the dollars that we are given. I also want to say that we have $330 million in bond issues on the books. There has not been a tax increase in eight years, given those bond packages that have passed with your help. I also want to address Ronald Johnson's Fire Academy. We did today pass the two Fire Academy models. We cannot do the public safety because of age limits. We did ask, but we could not do that. It will be in two sites, we will decide those sites in October based on two demographics. CTE has been our pride and joy in this district. 21% growth at Smithfield-Selma in CTE last year alone. That doesn't happen when you don't care about children and their future. Our future is college. Our future is college, career and life. No matter where our children go, we want them to carry the Johnston County banner and be proud of where they came and from where they were educated. It takes everybody to help educate children. We appreciate your support, we appreciate the support of the taxpayers with our bond issues. I hope that you're proud of your schools, I hope that you are working hard to make our schools better. We're not where we want to be, but we're the best game in town and we are so because of your help and your support and I hope that will continue. I ask for your vote on November 8th and I will continue to serve you to the best of my ability with children first. Thank you.
Mr. Ronald Johnson?
Just to start by humbly clarifying that, you wouldn't be offering criminal justice hands-on courses, you'd be offering textbook classes like con law, arrest, search and seizure and civil litigation, things of that nature you can do with a textbook and that's well within the realm of what you can do in a public school system. I'd start by saying there are four good people on this stage. You couldn't lose by voting for any of them, but you know what to do, you can vote for me in November. I'd like to start by thanking, and I gotta do this quick, my campaign team, the ones that keep me going, Jeffries, Rayquan, Katie, Whitney, my wife Jamie and some of the other ones I can't name. Tonight you've heard from the Republican candidates running for school board. I'm proud to be a Republican, but in November when you go to the election booth, I don't want you to just think of Ronald Johnson as just a Republican. I also don't want you to think of Ronald Johnson as just a police officer. I want you to think of Ronald Johnson as someone who has worked tirelessly to help students in the Johnston County schools. Because when a kid needs help, it doesn't matter about their party affiliation, I'm gonna help them. Like I said before, I don't care if you're a Democrat, Republican, member of the Green Tea, Wig, Federalist or Anti-Federalist Party, it doesn't matter to me. I still need your support. I'm gonna help the students in Johnston County, especially here at home at Triple S. And when I do, I hope you're behind me because you certainly don't wanna be in my way. Have a great night.
And finally, Mr. Toddson?
I'd like to thank the party, all the people in the audience that cared enough to come out, all the people that may watch it, that is interested in Johnston County schools. As many of them said up here, we all have passion or we would not be here tonight. We all have ideas, but we have to lock arms in order to make something happen on the school board. Yes, once we get in there, the, it doesn't matter if you're a Republican or Democrat or whatever the case may be, we all have to lock arms and go into one accord and do what's best for the students and teachers and the staff for Johnston County schools. You have up to four votes in the November election. As Ronald stated, all four of us are up here, you have four votes. I just would appreciate being one of those four votes when you go to the booth on November the 8th. As I stated in the beginning, I have a vested interest. I have a wife that's a 20-year veteran school teacher here in the county. I have two students in the Johnston County Public Schools. One is a senior at North Johnston High School and I have a middle schooler at North Johnston Middle School. We live within mile, couple of miles of three different districts. It doesn't matter where we live to, to put people on the board. What matters is what's in our heart and I firmly believe that we all have that or we would not have, that we would not set enough time aside to come up here and answer questions tonight. Again, thank you for coming and thank you for listening to our ideas and God bless you.
All right. Thank you everybody for coming out.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Chairman.
I got just a few announcements and then we'll get everybody out of here. Thank you everyone for coming out and being part of this event. Thank you to the candidates for the grueling schedules that you have endured and putting yourselves on the line to serve our school board and serve our children and we appreciate that very much. Thank you so much to our moderators. I'd like to also thank our Vice Chair Denise Rentsch, Vice Chair of the Johnston County Community College, Mr. Tom Goff, past Chair, lady of the rock star behind the scenes here at Lake Otis Hackett. We appreciate that very much. Michelle Dowers, our Secretary and also President of the Johnston County Public Williams. Also, just a few other quickly, Judge Karen Stewart's with us, Judge, we're happy you're with us. I see Charlotte Reed back there from Senator Reagan's office and very glad that she's with us. Craig, all of our registered deeds, had to leave to go to another event, but he was here the majority of the time. And also Judge Paul Holcomb was with us in the very beginning and I hope I didn't miss anybody. Thank you for taking the time, we appreciate you coming out and enjoying this again. I hope it's been informative for you and encourage your family and friends to show up at the polls. Thank you and have a good night.